All right, Mayor, we are live.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Okay, well, good evening again. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Committee of the Hold to Order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matty.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Eme.
Present.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Melo Wambly. Mayor, you're on mute.
Yes, I'm here, though. Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item on our agenda is COVID-19 update our city manager, Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick comments. Uh, the Small Business Grant Program, uh, we have noticed slowing in the applications that we've received. Uh, but for the community, uh, we do have nearly $100,000 that remains available for small businesses to apply for, uh, those grants. Also, I at the council meeting next Monday on the 28th, uh, the emergency ordinance, uh, the emergency order ordinance will come before council with a staff recommendation to, uh, uh, end that effective June 30th. It will also include, uh, some best practices that we've learned along the way amidst COVID. And then lastly, uh, while we still have a vaccination, uh, footprint, uh, vaccination site at the arena, the footprint is much smaller, but that continues for the next few months. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, City Manager Gleason. Uh, our next item on our agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody registered to speak live or any email comments?
Uh, we actually received no public comment, registered or email.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Uh, is there a motion to approve the, the, uh, and only on the, on the consent agenda, there's only minutes. So is there a motion to put a consent agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Bowlin, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Becker. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matty.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Eme.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The item passes. There are no nays to announce. Next item on our agenda is presentation discussion and direction of future agenda topics, starting with, uh, item A, presentation discussion by McLean County Regional Planning Commission on the Go Safe McLean County Action Plan, and I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, very pleased to introduce, uh, this topic tonight. Uh, Kevin Cothe, our Public Works Director, uh, has been actively, uh, working with Ray Li, the Executive Director at, uh, McLean County Regional Planning, uh, for the last year, year plus. And I was gonna pass this to, uh, Kevin with, uh, some, uh, opening comments. Kevin?
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight with this, uh, Go Safe McLean County Action Plan. I just wanna take the opportunity to recognize that, uh, you know, we have an intergovernmental group that meets on a regular basis that includes, uh, the City of Bloomington Town, Normal County, and McLean, and Regional Planning Commission, along with some other partners, including Connect Transit, and ISU, and IW. And, uh, we meet on a regular basis to talk about transportation and development issues, and this is just one of those, uh, you know, specialty things that came out of this, uh, group was a, a specialty group to talk about Vision Zero. Many of you have heard of Vision Zero. It's a worldwide initiative, and this is a, uh, Go Safe Action Plan is an implementation of Vision Zero specific to our community, involving many stakeholders of the community, and, uh, it's, it has been a process over the course of a year plus. And, uh, it's my great privilege to introduce, uh, Ray Li, who's the Executive Director, and Jennifer Six, who's the Senior Transportation Planner with McLean County Regional Planning Commission, and, uh, they will step through some of the, uh, process we went through and the recommendations of the plan, so, uh, take it away, Ray and Jennifer.
Thank you, uh, Kevin, and good evening. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and members of the City Council, and also Mr. Gleason, to give us the opportunity to share with you this very important project uh, for our community regarding traffic safety, and as, uh, is the COFEE point now is really, uh, part of an international movement, called Vision Zero, that started in 1997 in Sweden, and it's going across the oceans to other parts of the country, uh, in the state of Illinois, uh, according to their map. Uh, this network, this international network, um, for the state of Illinois have, uh, had, it only has the state, uh, the city of Chicago on it, so we could be the next one. Uh, we try, uh, to have that for, for be, to be part of the network. And this planning process for the Vision Zero, which got me branded to as Go Safe, so you might hear Go Safe, but what we means is really to that Vision Zero, and Vision Zero means zero fatality and zero, uh, serious injuries, uh, due to traffic accidents, uh, so that's where the, the name Vision Zero comes to. And this planning process that we started, um, last year, and it's all happened during the pandemic, so we tried to have to check over your food, the planning process, but, uh, at the end, I think it, it was successful in a lot of buy, buy-ins and a lot of participations, you know, by the community. And the plan was adopted by the Regional Planning Commission just a couple of months ago, uh, in April, and the, uh, plan, uh, I'll just, go through some slides, and it will be, uh, helped by my colleague, uh, Jennifer, and then with the help of your IT staff to have us move the slides, uh, uh, ahead. This project is funded by IDOT, uh, Illinois Department of Transportation through a grant fund now, and so, uh, as this relates to traffic safety, uh, next slide, please. Uh, it just gives you a sense of timeline. Uh, the project took place in June of 2020, a year ago, actually. Uh, and it went through our process. We didn't do it just by staff only, but we also had a project steering committee and also a subject matter expert panel, uh, including some staff members, uh, of the City of Bloomington, and next slide, please. And they had a lot of meetings and discussions, and we also, to a later part of the planning process, we have three virtual committee conversations, uh, public meetings held and with, uh, input, and also we allow, uh, public comments even outside of the, uh, virtual, uh, open meetings, and so with all those information and input collected, uh, the consultants helped to put together a plan, and that plan was considered and then adopted, uh, by the McLean County Regional Planning Commission. And while the, the plan says McLean County, I want to point out that it's not just for, McLean County, not just for the rural area, uh, in fact, it's, well, it's for the entire, uh, region, uh, the urban and rural areas, but actually, as you can imagine, uh, most of population, the intensity of traffic, most of the accidents happen in the urban areas. I just want to call that to your attention. So it's county-wide, but a lot of the activities, traffic, uh, incidents happen in the urban area. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, there was project, uh, steering committee and also subject matter experts, uh, representing the universities, major employers, businesses, uh, school districts, economic department, sector, uh, for the city, town, county staff, you're from engineering, public works, planning, uh, your police department, uh, county health department, uh, and so really a lot of different sectors, a lot of governments, I mean, in this planning process, and of course, uh, we, uh, could not just do it ourselves, and we enlisted, uh, through a RFP process, had a consultant team selected, and that's the higher group. Uh, it's a local consultants, but they actually do work over the country, and we are, uh, just so glad to have them, uh, to help us through the process, and also they have a subconsultant called Five Brand Co-op, uh, to help the branding, marketing, the graphics design of this project, and in fact, they just got a 2021, uh, year for the year, uh, the graphic design award, which is a national, uh, because of this project. So that's one point, and we just got notified last week. Next slide, please. So we're just going to cover the priorities, the core principles, uh, the data, we're not going to go into too deep, because, uh, when you have time, you can refer to the report, uh, which I believe Kevin, um, Mr. Cothe's memo has the, the link, uh, to the actual report. We're gonna talk about the targets and timeline, and then, uh, Jennifer is going to cover the strategies and recommendations of the three major areas, the infrastructure, data research, and technology, and community culture change. Next slide, please. So there are seven years for the Go Safe priorities. Traffic safety is not just about roads. Actually, it's more than just roads. Equity, education, enforcement, engineering, evaluation, environmental stewardship, and economic impact. Just think of all those. Next time when we start, you know, uh, driving in the road, and when you hear about accidents and, and how to be, can be saved, just think about those seven priorities. Next slide, please. I'm not gonna read this, uh, or this text, but just to want to point out the five core principles. Uh, first is traffic deaths are preventable and unacceptable. Human life is our highest priority. And so, human errors is inevitable and predictable, but then we can decide so to, to really anticipate those errors. Fourth one is the human behaviors, education, traffic safety, enforcement. They're important to, to a safe transportation system. Last of all is, people are inherently vulnerable to crash injuries and speed, uh, and the speed is really a major factor in, in sometimes really how bad the crash, uh, would be. Next slide, please. So the, the big target and timeline is zero fatalities or life-changing injuries by 2030. And it's really, it seems to be a, uh, high goal, but I think it's, it's doable i- if we all, as a community, would work together and through different ways. Next slide, please. So, uh, the, the fourth slide, uh, Jennifer is going to, uh, focus on the recommendations and strategies in how we can, uh, implement the plans and all this so that we can achieve that, that goal. Jennifer?
Thank you, Ray. Uh, this is gonna be quick because there's a lot of text here and we're short on time, so, um, I'm, on this, obviously, we're starting with infrastructure, and the sort of through line here is use of complete streets, the concept, the plans that we already have, um, to direct the process of, of addressing transportation system safety. Um, we also are looking at special attention to alternate modes of, um, transportation, walking, biking, transit use, and others. And finally, we're looking at a concentration on safe transportation options for vulnerable and disadvantaged people in the community. And that's important because a lot of the alternate modes focus more in that direction. Next slide, please. Um, as a result of previous work that has been done with respect to complete streets, there is already, um, a, an inventory of prioritized street segments. Um, some of these are already done, some of them are yet to come, and the idea is that this will be a running, um, inventory that allows us to process where we have to focus next, and that's our community altogether. Next slide, please. Excuse me. Um, throughout the planning process, and Ray has already alluded to this, one thing is clear, which is the weakest link are human beings in this transportation system. And so, that's true to such a degree that IDOT, the Illinois Department of Transportation, focused all of its efforts on distracted driving, and it's definitely an issue that has to be contended with here as well as across the state. Just a few examples here of the kind of issues that can arise and the difficulty of managing human beings. Next slide, please. Thank you. Data recommendations boil down to a couple of things. Uh, we need more data from multiple sources to track resources, analyze data quality by comparing one set against another. Um, this includes crowdsourced data. In some instances, that will be a part of the process of looking at where the real opinions are. Um, we'll look at ways in which emerging transportation technologies, data management reforms can go hand in hand and contribute to achieving the goals that are set forth here, um, and to do all of this as transparently as possible, item four here, um, while at the same time protecting personal privacy, and that will be an interesting trick, since of course, for many people, that's an issue that they're very concerned about. Next slide, please. Okay. So, research recommendations. Um, we happen to be lucky to be in a community with, with, that's rich in information and with the analytic talent. We need to use that information wisely, and as you can see, excuse me, as you can see, some of these indications are that we, we sort of gather in, you know, stakeholders and interested parties and medical community and so on, to help us decide how to proceed, what kind of research is needed. Um, tapping those resources will create a stronger implementation of the Go Safe Transportation Safety Initiative, and aid in the thoughtful implementation of new technologies. We really have to think carefully about these as we go forward, and this is sort of the area in which we'll do that, both with respect to transportation systems and also data safety. Next slide, please. Ah, technology, that's what it's all about. Um, several of these all focus on one particular, what they call micro mobility option, and that is a controversial subject. You may have seen it in motorized scooters that have popped up in various places. Um, there's some dissension about whether or not those are a good idea, uh, but again, this needs analysis, it needs data to tell us how well those really work and how dangerous they are. Um, and we have to do that with specific data and also the cooperation of law enforcement. Um, we're also gonna need to look at technologies that rely on communications between vehicles and between vehicles and surrounding infrastructure, other permutations of the sort of vehicle information network, and we'll be looking at those through a safety list. We'll be examining those in terms of how well they work and how implementable they are, and look for opportunities to test new technologies to evaluate their suitability for wide-scale use. Next slide. Thank you. Um, and this is really the interesting one, because this notion of community culture change, uh, raises a lot of, of issues about how we go about this. Kind of two tracks of approaching this. Uh, one is the launching and expanding of the initiative that we've outlined here, and it's described, of course, much more fully in the report itself, but also using the Go Safe tools that we've established, uh, in order to educate about safety and help people move to, um, a preference for safe behavior. Uh, Julie Hile from the Hile Group is fond of the example that, um, she wants to see people when they come, when they're approaching a yellow light, to be inclined more to put on the brakes than to try and rush through it, and that's the kind of culture change we're talking about here. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, and there are a lot of ways to take all of these ideas and the ways in which we've shown them and illustrated them into communities, large and small. Um, all ages, all abilities, all destinations should be able to participate in this and to know that they are safer in their community and safer in the transportation system than they might have been before. And with that, I'll turn it back to Ray.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is just some of the notes. Got to give you a sense, uh, when we have those free committee conversations, you know, those, uh, public, virtual public meetings, and we took notes and on, on comments, uh, that we received. Next slide, please. So, um, just see if you have any comments or questions, and what we would also like to do is to get any feedback you may have. While the, the plan has been adopted by the McLean County Regional Planning Commission, you know, with this, like, joint effort, uh, with, with others, but we would really like to just see if the city council, uh, is comfortable with the plan as it is, or, uh, if you would like to, you know, have your own version or adopt some variations. Uh, either way, you know, we can work with the city, uh, manager, um, and your staff, uh, to let go. Just wanted see if you have any feedback or any, uh, thoughts, then we can all work together. As you can see, this is a major effort. Uh, traffic essence don't stop at city limits. I mean, it's the region, uh, it's people, people travel from from A to point B, and, uh, so it really takes a committee-wide effort, so, uh, but we also value your input and your feedback, so, uh, and that would help us to see what's the best way to implement the plan and what framework that we should structure, uh, to make it a better place, safer place for everybody in our community. But thanks for the opportunity, but questions, comments, feedbacks?
Okay, say, thank you very much, Ray and Jennifer, for, uh, a great presentation and, and what, although, uh, there are only six or seven slides, I, I know it took a lot of work. It's a lot more work than, uh, what it might look, uh, so, um, and, you know, and I can tell, oh my goodness, that there is quite a bit of interest in the topic because there are a lot of questions. Uh, so I'm gonna start with, uh, Councilmember Crable, and bear in mind that we do have, uh, 15 minutes for questions, so I would ask you to be, uh, expeditious, as expeditious as possible. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I'll just reiterate, uh, what you, what the mayor said with regard to our thanks for the, for, for the presentation and all the work that you, you both put in. I do have some concerns I wanted to address. I know that, uh, a lot of, uh, our number of the parts of the plan, uh, talked about the increase in law enforcement, um, with regard to traffic stops, um, and I know from, uh, various studies, uh, whether it's the Innocent Project, Project, the Urban Institute, uh, Strong Towns discuss how traffic stops do more harm than good. Um, do you agree that more interaction between armed officers and the public increases the risk of harm? That maybe we would be trading one risk for another?
Um, the law enforcement is, is actually, uh, just one of many, uh, strategies and recommendations, and actually, if I recall, and, and Jennifer could add to that, during the course of the planning studies, uh, we actually talked about that too, uh, and also would, I would note that the, uh, Assistant Chief, uh, Police Chief, uh, from City of Bloomington, was there too, we recognize, uh, that actually giving out tickets, it's not, uh, it's just one of the ways, you know, to slow down, you know, traffic, uh, and to, uh, reduce the amount of accidents, uh, but we don't want to, uh, regret that either. Um, and so, yeah, it's just one of the many tools that, that, uh, needs, uh, for, for making it a safer place, uh, to live. So, yeah, we, we wouldn't say, oh, yeah, stop giving out tickets, but we recognize there's so many other ways, like Jennifer was saying, the community cultural change, uh, and other ways, uh, at the education, we go to the, the school districts, and, and it, it takes everybody. It's not just tickets.
Right, right. Thank you. Um, and, um, one, I, um, you may know, um, some of the ways that, uh, can lessen the need for, um, you know, traffic enforcement, um, automated speed enforcement, um, red light cameras, which is old technology, um, and even technology, uh, with regard to recording, uh, interactions with officers that actually are getting to the point where the stop can be totally virtual. Um, so I, I hope that those types of things, uh, you know, can be looked at. Um, and my last, uh, question topic would be on road design. I'm gonna give a statement and see if you agree with it. Um, generally speaking, narrow travel lanes, shorter block lengths, uh, tree canopies all contribute to drivers traveling, traveling more slowly. Conversely, wide lanes, long block lengths, and open skies communicate to drivers that higher speeds are appropriate. Would, would you agree with that statement?
Um, I would say for, for the most part, I do, uh, because it, um, population change, development pattern change, uh, the roads that were designed 50 years ago might not work for today's traffic. And so, yeah, the, the complete street concept, I think, is kind of related to what you were talking about, try to accommodate cyclists, walk, you know, pedestrians, and road, I mean, autos, and, and so, where this long block or shorter block, I think it's, we really have to look at the whole picture. That's a part I wasn't sure, uh, because we need depending on the exist, because we're to deal with the existing, uh, development pattern, but I think definitely the other, uh, factors definitely should be looked at. I think narrower lanes, uh, people call those, uh, road diets, you know, will, will be good. I think it's been successful in many places.
And, and I'll just finish with, I, you know, I would rather see us focus more on, on road diets so that the natural speed that people drive would, would be lessened rather than, uh, increase in, in law enforcement, so that'll, that'll be all for me. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crable. Uh, next is, uh, Councilmember Matty.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Um, I was actually chiming in to talk about road diets as well. Uh, when we passed the, the, uh, the smart, or the master, Bike Master Plan that included the temporary restriping of Washington Street, um, I remember that I had people who actually came to my store and screamed at me that we were going to be killing children, um, during that point of time, and, uh, those same people came back three months later and said, you know, I'm really sorry, I apologize, but traffic legitimately is slower on Washington Street through the Founder's Grove area now that we put the bike lanes in. It did make people slow down with those narrower lanes, so I, I definitely agree that, um, road diets are a way to go, not to mention as we build wider roads, it costs more money to repave and, and fix those roads as we go along. So anything we can do to naturally cause people to slow down, I think, is a good thing. Um, uh, that being said, um, I actually think that we should be careful of hyperbole about the danger of traffic stops as well at the same time in that, um, you know, there, it, it's a tricky subject, it's a difficult subject, but it doesn't necessarily, we don't want to try to villainize Bloomington Police Department because of, of simple traffic stops, you know? As somebody who was definitely accused of having a lead foot in my younger years, um, the, the, the speeding tickets probably weren't what slowed me down. It was the increases in my car insurance because of the speeding tickets that made me rethink my culture of, of going faster than I probably should have, so, um, let's just be, be careful of some of that, um, rhetoric that's not necessary in this conversation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Matty. Uh, next is, uh, Councilmember Montney.
Hi, um, thank you. Appreciate hearing from you today. Um, this is a huge topic. Um, you know, for over a hundred years, there have been organizations, including the federal government, trying to improve traffic safety. So, um, while it's, um, important to have people involved in thinking about opportunities for improvement, the root causes associated with traffic safety, um, are very broad and very systemic, and really it would be, um, impossible to action them in alignment with the vision statements that have been. So if the intention is to be aspirational and to create awareness, I understand that. Um, I just, you know, I'm, I'm offering just a bit of a pragmatic suggestion here that the ability to achieve the vision will require, you know, looking at liquor licenses, looking at lifestyles, looking at incredible, things that really, I, I feel, um, perhaps we would make progress, but I'm skeptical that the vision, uh, would be able to be realized in the timeframe that you have laid out.
But, thank you for the comments. Uh, I can really hope, really is a community effort, uh, It seems, yeah, by twenty thirty, we're like nine years away. It it takes a lot, right? And we had to start from somewhere. Just remember, a few years ago, we had those fatalities, people trying to cross or fatalities on Veterans Parkway. You know, those might have been avoided. So I believe we have to start from some, you know, some way. Behavior behavior change takes time, we all know that. And so we just start and do our part in getting closer to the to the end, hopefully achieving the goal. But if not, if we're eighty percent, ninety percent, that would be good, but we have to start from somewhere. That's why you're, whether endorsement of this plan or adopting a version of or adjustment, whatever, that would give us some idea of what's the better approach. Should we go by ourselves? Should we, you know, what with collaborating, you know, with other governmental agencies and staff? Really, this is a community-wide issue and we should work together, I believe, in that we can got that established and then we can, like I suggested, we then aim for the goal.
So, Ray, I I know I spent the first twenty years of my career handling auto injury cases and continue to work with someone whose daughter was tragically killed by a drunk driver who's currently working with many organizations for federal legislation in order to prevent people driving while intoxicated with technology. You know, it's interesting, the bicycles. I was driving home yesterday on my own street and I came very close to being hit by a bicyclist who was texting while riding his bike. So it runs the gamut. Distracted driving is not just something that applies to automobiles, but thank you again.
Yeah, no, I I think it's a good point. I mean, even we need your help, the plan doesn't stop here. I mean, I think looking at the liquor license, you know, that's, there's a great suggestion. There may be other ways that we should look into in terms of building up data, looking at the different ways to implement. Don't be bound by the, just this document, right? Because if there's other new ideas beyond this document, yeah, let us know. Your whatever works to to, we need to get to that zero.
Okay, thank you very much. I see quite a few hands here and I I can sense that we're probably going to go over time in terms of the time allotted. So maybe I should entertain a motion to extend the time. I I would suggest fifteen minutes because I can, I can see with six or seven hands, this is going to go much further than we thought. It looks like Councilmember Corio has her hand up. And then I will take a, would that be a second, Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, I'll make a second. Ten minutes?
I said fifteen.
Okay, sure.
So, Madam Clerk, would you please tell the role?
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this would put us at six fifty-five and nothing further. Okay, let's see. So Councilmember Becker.
So, thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the information. Want to just piggyback on two things. One, I I agree with Councilmember Mathie. Let's let's not focus on something that I don't think was intended here, which is the the focus on the police from that side of it. But also what Councilmember Montney talked about is, I think focusing on the aspirational things and the culture things is nice. I I think your your ability to impact that without huge cost is questionable. What I'd like to see is is an example of Pareto analysis of the the causes of fatalities in this community over the last ten years. And then look at, okay, was it drunk driving? Was it accidents involving speeding? Was it, what was it? And attack each one of those individually. And I think you'd get more quick return by focusing that way than focusing on an aspirational thing that's going to be years in building a culture. I'm not saying you can't do the aspirational culture building part, but I would rather focus on true root cause that's actually impacted this community. So just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker. Next is Councilmember Bowlin.
Thank you and thank you for the work. I read the packet, that large booklet you put out, and there's lots of information. You said that this is funded by the, by IDOT. Do you mean that the study was funded by IDOT? Or all these improvements are going to be funded by IDOT?
Just just a study, it's just the study by itself, yeah. The improvements are just implementation later.
Okay. So this could cost the city quite a bit of money. I do know that Route Nine is committed to having bike lanes put in when they resurface. And that in and of itself is going to cost the city quite a million, quite of a lot of money. And I am not at all in favor of that micro mobility option. And if we had like boardwalks or boulevards that had limited traffic or like how they closed off State Street in downtown Chicago, that would be one thing. But even still, a lot of the people on, that are pedestrians, don't like those micro mobility things for for very good reason. And they, they're not visible. There are people in my neighborhood that that use them. And I can't see them when I'm driving. So it's actually more dangerous to promote some something like that than than other options. And I'm going to get on my soapbox here. Ward Two does not have any bus service. There are very few and far between sidewalks. There are people that walk down Veterans Parkway heading west on a two-lane road at night with no streetlights, all weathers, during all weathers and all seasons of the year. So I think that that might be a place to start. I'll end it there.
Totally agree, and and my staff could testify. I've told them, complaining the same thing that you just talked about, how dangerous that that Road Nine, Veterans Parkway area. I see so many people getting off the bus or get on the bus or causing six-lane roadway without sidewalks, without pedestrian lights. But I would note also, though, some of the railways are IDOT-owned, it's not city-owned. And so we had to work with IDOT also. And and safety, I think, is is high priority. So, yeah, it costs money. But I think what is IDOT grow or local roads, the city homes, I think, you, I'm sure that you weigh your safety.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Bowlin. Next, we have Councilmember Corio.
Hey, thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. A great initiative. I want to echo some of Councilmember Crable's comments. I don't, I think it's absolutely relevant to talk about police when we're talking about speeding and traffic enforcement. And I think that we can have valid critiques of what some of those solutions might, like what the byproducts of some of the solutions might be. And I think that's fair game, and I don't think that's villainizing anybody. But I think it's a matter of fact that the, you know, that pretextual stops oftentimes are the reasons that we see higher-profile use of force incidents, including fatal use of force incidents. And so I do think that there is a very high cost, particularly if if the narrative, especially in some parts of the West Side, and particularly with folks of color, is we are getting pulled over for any old reason, because I didn't turn on my turn signal or because I didn't stop as completely as the officer would have liked. And they are just looking for any old excuse to pull you over, to pull you out of your car, to search you, to find something wrong.
Point to point of order, we're talking about the Vision Zero. We're not going off topic onto. You're talking about something that's not part of Vision Zero.
Okay, let let me speak. So I'll, Councilmember Corio, I'll give you a little bit of time to finish with your thought, and then we can move on.
Yeah, so to me, this is about enforcement, right? And anything that we do that invites stronger, more aggressive enforcement feeds that narrative, feeds those incidents. And so I'm supportive of the plan as a whole, but would be extremely cautious to support anything that actually brings life into more aggressive enforcement, particularly because there's a ton of data that points to us that it just isn't very effective and that we lose a lot of community trust in enforcing some of these smaller, smaller laws. The culture-changing stuff, I think, though, difficult and costly, gets actually at the heart of the matter. And and that's, I think that's the road that I'd like to see us go down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corio. Next, we have Councilmember Emig.
Thank you, and I'll say the same thing. Thanks for the presentation. A lot of points have already been made. I just want to point out that I recently had a conversation with a constituent who lives on Evans. It's a brick street that's kind of falling apart, but but I asked her, so what do you think about this street? And she said, I love that it slows traffic down. And I think that notion that we can make the community much safer if if people are on a road diet. It's my new favorite phrase. But above and beyond that, I mean, we passed the Brick Streets Plan. We we have many, many plans that we've passed. And essentially, they're unfunded, a lot of them. So what would I would find most helpful here is that really data-driven root cause analysis of what, why are these accidents happening? What is causing the greatest level of harm? And then prioritize, you know, what what is one thing, very concrete, that we can do and and achieve and start to analyze its effectiveness going forward. And finally, I just want to put a pluck out for like the Safe Routes to School Grants. Those are amazing. We got some fabulous new sidewalks around Sheridan recently. And this, this seems to me like a way towards that kind of actualization. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Emig. And it looks like we have a Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes, thank you. Many of the points that I wanted to make have already been talked about. I do agree with Councilmember Becker that I would really like to see a focus on, you know, what is causing fatalities and and that sort of thing in this community. And so that, I guess, I would be in favor of a more finely-grained analysis on that level. I I also feel like, you know, what, you know, that this is such an ambitious plan and I I love ambition. I'm a little concerned about its its viability and the timeframe in which you've set yourselves in order to to make it work. I think Council, Councilmember Montney also mentioned this. I I think, you know, setting up benchmarks, things along the way that help us know how are we doing as we implement a plan like this, I think, would be really imperative. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I see, I still see, okay, Councilmember Crable, but real quickly, because we're getting closer.
Yes, this will be quickly. So wasn't saying anything against law enforcement. It's just a fact that these stops can be dangerous, both for the officer and the person being stopped. I know from from looking at some reports that are the number of speeding citations that have been given by the police department and traffic citations have gone down over the last ten years. And I would want that to continue. And, you know, a couple of people have talked about the difficulty in implementing this plan. And like with anything, if if there's an issue that nobody else can solve, we ask the police to do it. So I'm just concerned that ultimately, all these other things, the focus is going to be on on law enforcement to try to get us to the numbers that we want to get to for these safe streets. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Ray and Jennifer, I think, you know, from what I gather, it 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 sounds like you might have some refining to do. And and I don't know, you know, I think that's the, that's my impression, you know, my sense of the council. And, you know, I wanted to also ask, what what is the, you know, in light of that, what's the next step for for you guys? And particularly, as you you've mentioned, that you wanted the the council and other bodies to to endorse the plan.
Yeah, well, we're doing kind of similar presentation, you know, to to the town normal and and also the county, the, that is to start with the county's traffic committee or transportation committee. And then we also got invited to other community organizations to kind of inform them, to educate them about the plan. And we, definitely, this is also the, we recognize this, the city is provocative. You want to deviate or whatnot. I would just say, yeah, sometimes it may take, there's so many tools in the toolbox. And we recognize, we know, get every one hour, we're not able to do it at the same time. And we had to prioritize, we had to look at the data. We had to look at, you know, what are the grant opportunities there are out there? To have to fund even some further studies on the the safety tools and and other things. So it's it's a major effort, but it's really down to the our areas, you know, reputation, our families, friends, in safety. Have to start somewhere, but we'll work with the the city manager's office and and your staff to just see what would be the next step should be, you'll give them your feedback. And I really appreciate all your feedback and just see what would be appropriate ways to go. I mean, that's, that's, as Jennifer was presenting, and as some of you have read or you have read the documents, there's so many toolbox, I mean, too many tools in the in the in the toolbox. And we have only so many people to work on it. And so we have to engage the community and then see who can do what. And I think our goal is the same, is safety, is zero, nobody get killed, nobody get injured. So I think we have the same goal. It just, yeah, how how do we achieve that? And how long it might take, you know, but we just, at the start, the sooner we establish, you know, what kind of collaboration or or willingness and the framework, then we can have structure accordingly and then move on there.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I and I think, you know, the the goal is, you know, it's aspirational. And I think it's great and it, at the very least, you know, it puts this on the radar for everyone and for the community to to begin a conversation, you know, how we get there. I think it's just, you know, probably a matter of fine-tuning things, you know, as we go, but we definitely appreciate it. Thank you so much for for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you all for the opportunity and the time and the quest, questions and comment. We really value your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Next item on our agenda is a presentation of the proposed twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three IT strategic plan by our own Craig Macbeth, everybody's best friend. But I'm gonna ask City Manager Gleason to tee this off for us first and then we'll hear from Craig. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And to the Bloomington community, this is something when Craig took the position as an interim in April of twenty twenty and then a couple of months later was chosen as the IT Director. So he's coming up on a year, but he's a longtime city employee. And the to-do list was rather lofty for him. But at the top of that list is what's being presented tonight, the plan for us internally and externally. You throw COVID in there, you know, where he stood up an organization to make sure that we could function virtually, where we can conduct the business of the city in this setting virtually. virtually. And uh it's quite amazing uh that uh he's been able to accomplish this uh with very good help. Uh his department is uh small but mighty. And uh we have uh, you know, the good fortune of uh having uh Mark Owens here uh on contract. Uh he was uh an IT manager at State Farm, uh is and currently uh is an adjunct at uh ISU and uh very proud of the work that uh we're going to be presenting publicly tonight. And Craig, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, city manager Gleason. Uh appreciate that. And thank you, mayor and city council for your time uh tonight on this. Let me go ahead and get the uh slide deck queued up for you. And, you know, as Tim mentioned, this is a another project that we've been working on for quite some time. Um and and Mark and I are very excited to bring this to you tonight. Um it's a culmination of almost a year's worth of diagnostics and surveys and and just we're getting to this point, collecting the data that we need to to present this data. This is going to be just a simple short summary of our previous conversation we had earlier this this month. Uh we will cover what is an effective IT strategy, um why do we need one? How IT initiatives support the organization? Uh where do we want to be and 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 how do we want to accomplish these goals?
Well, the IT strategy we've developed is really designed to ensure that we align each of these IT initiatives that we speak to to an established organizational goal that the city has. So really, to effectively enable those goals, it's going to require us to invest in a strong and a stable underlying infrastructure that's going to help us move forward and into the future. So really, our intent here is to use this technology to enable and realize organizational goals and not just to randomly bring in technologies looking for a problem to solve. Craig?
Great, thanks, Mark. Um so what does that mean, you know, from an IT perspective? It it means organizing our departments, financial, technical, and human resources around the city's organizational goals, um ensuring that that everything that we do in the IT department meets a city goal, one or more city goals. Uh we want to make decisions with a focus on long-term investments um to prioritize our initiatives based on that value. From our organizational standpoint, we want to ensure that we are investing in technology to provide business value and future growth as well. The city is certainly planning on continued growth, uh including all new uh new technology expectations and requirements that are coming our way, changing priorities and and new initiatives that that come to us, you know, uh every quarter. This growth is going to put some pressure, you know, on our existing services and infrastructure. And our challenge is, as we work through this, is to not only strengthen our existing operations, but we want to leverage that new emerging technology as well. Um we have to have that balance. This plan is really going to ensure that we have the best possible chance for success in meeting our city goals. Um what we've done is we, you know, taken the defined city goals that you see in the middle of the screen there. And we've established IT goals that will align with each of those city goals. From that, we've defined a number of IT initiatives that we'll see a little bit later, that also allow us to execute on those IT goals. So when you look at an IT strategy as a holistic standpoint, it it encompasses the IT vision and mission and the city goals and the IT goals, the the guiding principles that we use. That is truly what the IT strategy is about. And based off the analysis uh that we've done over the last year, and while we have performed at higher levels um in certain functional areas of our department, uh we feel right now that we're solidly at a responder level um in this IT maturity scale that you see on this slide. Um we've got reliable infrastructure, we've got a great system, we've got um a an excellent help desk that has proven on the, again, the uh surveys and diagnostics we run. Um but we want to be better. Uh, you know, at the end of the strategic plan, we want to be at that partner or innovator level. And this slide really highlights that journey. And we need to also understand this slide as it it is truly stair stepped along the way. We do have to take every step along the way. There's no shortcuts to get there. Um you'll see very soon that that we're focusing on a lot of infrastructure improvements and modernization and and enhancements to our existing services to a better enable us to do some of these more innovative uh functions within IT. And as we transition to those higher levels, our human resources will be key to this transition. Our staff, ours, as as Tim mentioned, you know, we're small but mighty. Uh we've got excellent staff here at the city of Bloomington, uh especially in the IT department. And we need to be able to focus our efforts on the most critical functions and initiatives that we have available. Based on our IT goals, here's a number of areas um that we've identified that we need to make progress on or would like to make progress on by the time the strategic plan is done. So you see on the left-hand side that reiterates our IT goals that we developed. And and some of those areas again are, for example, modernization enhancement of critical infrastructure, making sure that we're able to do future innovative initiatives when that time comes. Uh we want to always look for ways to automate across the organization, reducing manual processes as much as possible and increasing efficiencies. So that way, it is easy to do business with the city, both internally and from a citizen's standpoint. Uh we want to enhance certainly our relationships with our area partners and share information and expertise. Uh we've gone a long way to do that with with some of the new alliances that uh that have popped up in last year, including the Bloomington Normal Innovation Alliance. Uh we want to create adaptive IT environments that can quickly adjust uh to organizational changes. Technology today is changing a- at a faster and faster pace, um more so than it ever has been. So we need to be able to stay on top of that. And then we want to certainly enhance our current project intake to ensure that our approved projects are aligned to organizational priorities. Right now, it's very important that uh one of the key aspects of the IT strategy is be able to uh prioritize all the initiatives that we have.
So as you can see, we have in the next couple of slides, um listed our top twenty-four initiatives. And then there's a bunch more after this as well, but these are our top twenty-four. And as you can see in the slide, many of these are already underway, we're being worked on, and some that are going to be starting up here soon. And as we indicated early, many of these initiatives are going to kind of build uh upgrade or modernize key parts of our infrastructure, we're going to need um to support these IT initiatives that we've developed. And then while we're doing a lot of modernization upgrade, we're also going to bring uh of some of our other initiatives are going to bring new functionality to those customers, to our employees and our business partners. Craig?
So we need some key takeaways from this, areas that we're going to need to be able to focus on for the strategic plan. Uh the first one is making sure that we engage the organization proactively. Being in those conversations with departments about technology needs at an early enough stage so we can ensure uh that that project is successful and as efficient as possible. Um we want to augment operational tools, uh making sure that our staff has the tools they need again to be as efficient as possible. And then we reinforce the idea of prioritization again and that stronger emphasis on project intake. We need to be able to um make sure that the projects that we're functioning and and working on today match and support the city goals. Because if right now, if nothing is a priority, then everything becomes a priority. And this for, you know, by having a priority, we can then, you know, ensure that we're getting the work done that we need to done, get done and and reinforce those critical functions within the department. It is certainly not a static plan as well. When we talk about the strategic plan, this will be an evolving roadmap that needs to continue to align uh as the business and the industries change. So we do plan to update the strategy, um you know, m- multiple times throughout the year and get back to you if there's any major changes. But really, the next steps is that we are seeking your consideration and approval of this plan um for next week's city council meeting. And and while there's really no financial commitment to this plan, it's it's really a ship, simply a shared understanding uh of where we need to progress with the city to meet the city's vision. Uh but when we're ready and some of those larger initiatives do come to be, we'll certainly be presenting those to you for your additional consideration and action at that time. And with that, we are open to any questions or comments you might have. Thank you very much.
Muted, sorry. Uh thank you very much, uh Craig and Mark, uh for your wonderful presentation. Uh I I have a sense that we have a couple of IT people uh on council who might have some questions. Uh so we're gonna start with uh council member Becker.
So more than, more than the questions at this point, I think I've I've talked with Craig in the past a little bit, but just to comment for those that may not be as familiar with some of this stuff. I'm involved with a lot of people making these similar purchasing decisions and um, you know, we'll say infrastructure decisions and the easiest way it can explain it is explain how my wife wants to work on our house. I want to fix the plumbing, I want to fix the windows, I want to fix the doors, she wants a new kitchen because it's visible, it's tangible. But when you go to do IT work, if you don't have the foundation in place, when you run into a need, be it a ransomware issue, something crashing, I've seen upgrades where people spent ten thousand on hardware and planned it for three days, take six months and close to two hundred fifty thousand dollars because their infrastructure was so out of date. Very, very typical with all the government agencies that we deal with, that this is the case, that the infrastructure is out of date, that some software somewhere, some component is so far off of maintenance that it just cascades and cause causes major problems. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I I I gather since Mark's nodding, but you know, that we really focus on this as we choose those top twenty-four and make sure that we don't I'm not advocating spending any amount of money here yet, but I'm just saying, let's not be penny wise and pound foolish as we don't get the infrastructure to a place where it can support the initiatives that become mandatory. So just my two cents there. I'll let other folks ask the questions.
Thank you, council member Becker and council member Montney.
Craig, I'll start with just a short question. Um when other areas invest in technology, say, for example, if Public Works is going to purchase um software, I'm assuming it comes with a cost benefit analysis and generally there be pledged labor cost savings as an example. Does your organization partner with them in the procurement process then?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Montney. The all technology really runs through the IT department. So whether that's a new software or a new hardware platform, uh the the hope is that all those conversations happen through the IT department and we do the evaluation to make sure that we have uh everything considered uh as much as we possibly can. Also evaluate whether we have existing systems in the city already or currently to make sure that they're either not buying something in duplicative mode or that we're actually maybe there's a better way to do some of those same things with our existing technology. That goes back to the the focus area of being at the table at the right time during those conversations to to have those conversations upfront, to make sure they know what we have available. But certainly, depending on the size of the project, uh we will certainly do cost benefit analysis on the larger ones where those make sense. We may not do it on the smaller ones, um where it's when it's more obvious, but uh certainly on the larger ones.
So I guess, um, you know, the next question then would be, I I'm assuming there's a benefit, even if not a cost savings, or we wouldn't be purchasing whatever solution we're looking for. Which area tracks benefits recovery? So if I'm a department head and I pledge that this particular investment in this software is going to allow me to cost avoid three FTEs in my division, who follows up to track and make sure that we actually achieve that cost reduction in alignment with the pledges that were made at time of purchase?
Very good question. Um most of that is done through the department head level uh in in the past. So I would say, you know, if that is a public works project and then they're involved in that type of solution, that is generally on on that individual department to produce those results if asked for.
I'll I'll jump in real quick and uh share some additional comments. The question about uh not just the IT department, but that's a critical function for the entire organization. Now, over the past couple of years, uh far more interaction uh between the departments uh to understand what the impacts are on one another. Uh IT sitting at the table is uh was definitely a priority uh charge for uh Craig. And uh we knew that uh that needed to occur. As far as realizing uh some of the improvements and uh some of the uh return on investment, if you will, uh that's uh that's very much part of the budget process every year as we review the ask of the different uh department directors, uh Chris Tomerlin, the uh budget manager, uh Scott Rathbun, obviously, as the finance director and myself. Uh this is something that uh we'll pull out the notes from the year prior and see if uh things are actually occurring as they should. It's the accountability piece.
All right. Um so with regard to projects that are being queued up for you and your intake process, uh generally, it would be my recommendation that how we do the work in the actual mechanics of the process should be evaluated before we try to optimize with technology. Because that keeps us from investing in technology to automate something that doesn't need to be done. And then just leaving with the benefits recovery, tracking that on a persistent basis and creating a level of discipline around that is something that I think would be very helpful to the city. And it would also be helpful at recovering the funding needed in order to fund, Craig, what your uh belief is in terms of the staffing needed in your area. Uh so I would double down on uh every purchase to understand the benefits being pledged, generally from a labor cost savings perspective, and making sure we're capturing that so that we know what those labor hours are, that we've actually reduced in cost. And then that can provide an opportunity for either A, cost reduction on behalf of the constituents and the residents of Bloomington, and B, uh something that, you know, might be a source to look at for any needed labor cost shifting to invest in IT.
Thank you.
Okay, uh next is council member Bowlin.
Uh thanks for the presentation. Alderman Becker and Alderman uh Montney was so eloquent, asking the questions, so I won't repeat them, but I am very supportive of what they said about the um increased efficiency, which would then supposedly save money that you can use for, you know, whatever you need to purchase, software, hardware, that type of thing. But out of ignorance, I want you to answer, what is number thirteen, where you say private wireless?
Sure.
As one of your, one of your goals, I have two questions, look, you know.
Okay. Yeah, no, private wireless uh network is our our private networking infrastructure that we have uh around the immediate downtown corridor in really supporting um uh private security cameras and and other uh internet services, uh such as our wireless water meters and and various infrastructure um that we use. So it's it's a wireless network that we built throughout uh the city of Bloomington, but primarily around the the downtown corridor at this time.
Okay, and um number sixteen, uh I guess it's going to improve fire department alerts.
Yep.
Could you explain how that is? And a second part is, is there any advantage or use that could help with the police department's um response to an emergency?
Okay, um so number sixteen is actually a good example, and and I probably won't speak to it as well as Chief Westwood. But that was a project that we worked with the fire department on um to integrate the uh CAD system, our our computer aided dispatch system to the fire departments. Um it allowed some increased technology in each station to be able to automate the notifications to the firefighters that there's an alert or emergency um and to do it in a safe manner, making sure that people are getting notified, that they've got a countdown timer, they can see their progress and see their performance. Um and that also decreases the response time uh to the to the incidents.
Okay.
Um and then your second question again was about the police uh interaction, um if there's any type of uh initiative that supports, you know, interaction, if there's any type of initiative that supports, you know, the response that police do for incidents, is that correct?
Well, yeah, it's in relation to the metcom where there's a delay and I was just wondering if, you know, if you're improving fire alert system, if there was some kind of system that the police could use for, you know, some kind of accident we were talking about earlier, accident on the road, you know, the police need to come, the fire needs to come, EMT needs to show up. So that's what I was wondering if there was something.
Not directly, but but certainly, you know, the fire station alerting system is already built on the computer aided dispatch system that the police department has, and it's very functional and a very well performing system. And that's why we're leveraging that same technology for the the fire department as well.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Bowlin. I know we are past our time, so I'm going to ask for another motion to extend. Let's do 10 minutes. Is that okay? I see I have, we have three hands here.
I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to extend.
Okay, let's just do 15 minutes. Is that okay with you? Just in case.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Motion by Councilmember Bowlin and then it looks like a second by Councilmember Crumpler, is that correct? Okay, awesome. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emi?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Korea?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward? Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. There are no names to announce. So next is Councilmember Ward.
Thank you for this presentation. I have kind of one brief question with maybe just a little bit of explanation. I'm wondering what kind of mechanisms there are for for public stakeholder feedback about city websites and and IT functionality. And the reason I'm asking this maybe to to continue with Alderman Becker's kitchen metaphor, it's it's yes, I wholeheartedly agree that the, you know, focus on the the plumbing and the infrastructure and and so forth is hugely important. And picking up on on Alderwoman Montney's questions around around cost and and so forth. I think those are hugely important, but at the end of the day, somebody's got to cook dinner or we're all going to go hungry. And I think that that it's pretty important to pay attention to the specific needs and and necessities of the person who's cooking dinner. And ultimately, there are there are two chefs in this kitchen. Of course, there are the city staff and city elected officials, people, you know, the city itself in terms of of people who work for the city. But there's there are also the the residents of the city and and I'm just wondering what kind of mechanisms there are along the way, not just sort of at a final presentation with public comment, but what mechanisms are there to test out some of these things and and say, how's this working for you? You know, is the height of this counter the right height for you? Is it an electric oven or a gas oven that you're looking for? You know, that kind of thing. Because if I had a nickel for every time somebody tried to update something and it it just, I I didn't ask for it, I didn't need it. It it doesn't serve my purposes and now I can't do the thing that I really need to do. I would be a very rich person. And I'm not saying that that anyone in the city has done that, but I'm just wondering, again, by a long way, what kind of mechanism is there to actually road test some of this with the public?
Great question. I would say a lot of that is driven by the individual initiative. So depending on the the initiative on, so for example, the city's website, we do use extensive UX testing and usability testing throughout the community with different areas and different groups, both with the partner that we're using to build that website, along with, you know, hopefully, you know, additional participation from area groups that we can pull as well, whether it's from an ADA or accessibility standpoint to just a functionality standpoint on how do you, how how is it easier to pay my bill going at this way or is it looking at this menu? So, you know, while that, while I think the premise of your question really isn't part of the IT strategic plan at that level. Certainly, once we get at the initiative level, that's where those details will come out as far as how best to to get that feedback. You know, I don't even know if I have a really good example because a number, again, a number of these initiatives are really internal infrastructure initiatives that that may not have, you know, opportunities for for participation like like public participation. But we will be also leveraging the Technology Commission for a lot of this, which is an advisory board, you know, that that we've started a couple of years ago. And they've been instrumental in this strategic plan development as well. They they've been through the presentation and we've received feedback from them. So the hope is that we can continue to leverage that Technology Commission on a number of these sub initiatives as well to get outside feedback. Did that answer your question?
It does. And, you know, it it just gives me the the heads up that that I need to keep asking the question along the way when those individual initiatives do come up, because I think that's going to be essential for my support for the individual initiatives.
Please do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next is Councilmember Crumpler, but no, no cooking metaphors because I'm getting hungry.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Craig and Mark for that presentation. Now, you know, there's certainly a lot going on. My question is really specific and at the risk of sounding slightly paranoid. You know, cybersecurity is a global issue and, you know, it seems like regularly in the popular press, I'm reading about companies being held hostage. And you mentioned ransomware. And I just wondered if you could comment on, you know, what if, you know, hackers who always seem to be one step ahead of the designers were were to hack it and try to hold a city like Bloomington hostage, what kinds of security software are you have, do you have in mind as as you move forward in this initiative?
So again, one of the, that would be a separate initiative where the details of that would certainly be vetted. You know, this is a very high level when we talk about the strategic plan and what it covers. But, you know, I can say, you know, that what we are doing today is the best possible that we can do to anticipate any kind of security breach or hack. And we make sure we have, you know, correct backups and improving those backups and making sure that we've got appropriate security measures in place based on best practices, not only from state of Illinois, but the the federal government as well. We also monitor, actively monitor active security incidents to make sure, especially when we are in the election period, to make sure that we're we're on top of that and preventing anything that we possibly can through firewall or any other security measure. But, you know, to really get the to the heart of your question, you know, there's there's so much to that 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 we need to further investigate. It is one of the areas that that are going to be focused on very soon. In fact, as I mentioned before, one of our latest Bloomington Normal Innovation Alliance meetings, we're going to be working with ISU and Wesley on the formation of a a area wide security consortium, basically to have those conversations, to share that knowledge and expertise within each other and maybe even gain some assistance from from those partners to help us and make sure that we're as safe as we can be.
Hey, great. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Answers my question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Crumpler. Last but not least, Councilmember Mathie, and we have five minutes and we will not extend further.
I don't know if the five minutes is going to get it done, but I'll see what I can. No, I just wanted to say, Craig and Mark, thank you for all the hard work that you did on this. You know, I know that what you showed us in the three on ones was about three times as big as what we saw tonight because of time constraints. And I know that what you showed us in the three on ones was only about one third of the size of the total presentation that was shown to the the Technology Commission because it is a great document, it's a great master plan, it does get down into the weeds and you know, if you're not a a geek, then it definitely would probably fry some brains along the way. But I'm just so pleased that we're moving down this path because when I was first elected, I like to tell people that our email system was still using Lotus Mail. And, you know, which of course IBM had discontinued like in, I want to say, 2010, maybe something like that, maybe earlier than that. And it was because IT was an overhead to be minimized at all costs and shoved into the corner and made to be quiet and not come out and talk to anybody. And, you know, thank you to Tim for understanding that IT can be a tool to make people more productive, to make staff more productive, to make other our residents have a better experience in integrating with the city and working with the city. And I think that that should be, you know, I know that's part of our plan, that one of the overriding goals of this whole plan is to make staff more productive and citizens more engaged, right? And and I think that this plan goes a long way towards towards getting us on the platform, you know, and I appreciate also that the the honesty that went into some of the self evaluations, right? It's never fun to be that honest and brutal upfront about where you're at and what you've done. So I'm I'm just was happy to see that nobody kind of glossed that one over and we were honest and we really took an in depth look at how we've performed in the past and what we need to do to get better. Thank you guys for all the hard work that went into this. Thank you for all the outreach to various stakeholders and and everything that you've done. And I look forward to seeing where this takes us next to make things better for everybody in Bloomington.
Thank you, Councilmember Mathie.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Mathie. And I guess I'm going to ask City Manager Gleason maybe to tell us about next steps in regards to the plan.
Thank you, Mayor. What we would like to do is to bring this back for council approval at next Monday's council meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. So next item on the agenda then is the presentation discussion of the solid waste program has requested by the Public Works Department and the Administration Department. Once again, City Manager Gleason for some opening comments and I think Director Kevin Kothey will do the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And for the Bloomington community, this conversation has gone on for about four or five months. This is actually presentation number five. This is where we're going to present some staff recommendations to try to address the in excess of a $1 million deficit for all things related to solid waste. We took four sessions previous to this to discuss what the problems were. This is something that was adopted by council. Many of the council members today were not a part of this. Staff weren't either, but this was adopted early in 2018. With any plan such as that, the magnitude of a plan like that, you like to take some time to assess to see if it's actually doing what was promised to the community, what the intention was. We found this time last year that we knew beforehand, but we were ready this time last year to make very similar presentations to the council and the community. But for COVID, that was put on pause and here we are today. Council has several options to consider, but these are just the staff recommendations to try to address. We know also that the community has come to expect a a level of service. To be quite honest, that is unseen in most municipalities. And that's not saying that we shouldn't do it. It's just saying that there's a cost for this. And tonight's presentation is one where Kevin will make the staff recommendations, briefly walk through some of the ground that we've covered previously. And then ultimately, we look to council for the next steps. Thank you. Kevin?
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Going to share my screen and get this slide deck going. So as was was mentioned, this is the fifth presentation. We've been building up to this point. And we've got some recommendations to share with you, including, you know, with the multifamily properties we had talked about previously. Those properties are eligible up to six units to be part of the solid waste program. As we know that some of them have, you know, excessive amounts of you know, a solid waste bulk that ends up being out on the curb between, you know, sometimes between tenants and so forth. We think that by increasing the bucket charge to more of a cost recovery of $50 per bucket that that will help to alleviate, reduce that bulk at the curb because it'll be more costly than just getting a dumpster and taking care of it that way. And then as far as the low income fee, because there's very few users of that system, the the cost savings, there's not not a lot there. And we have currently about 21 accounts that participate in that low income fee, so we don't recommend making changes to it because it does serve a need. Just a quick update on the air burner, as was approved back in April. We have purchased the unit. It's going to be delivered hopefully in August. We've also made application for the EPA permit, which we hope to have by then as well. And, you know, moving this direction, we look to save a significant amount of money on our disposal of brush annually. With the Citizens Convenience Center, we have implemented some things that we can within the limits of code. But there is some things that we need to codify in order to be able to enforce. And, you know, one of the things that we would suggest is allow two free vehicles, up to one bucket per vehicle per month for bulk drop off. This would not be for brush, but this would be for bulk. And we've implemented where we ask homeowners to show where they've got a permit to drop off remodeling debris. We're we're still working through some issues with that in coordination with our, you know, Economic Community Development Department because in in some cases, certain types of remodeling may or may not require a permit. But, you know, we we just want to make sure that, you know, we're not accepting waste from a contractor project where if a homeowner has a contractor do the work, they're supposed to provide for the disposal of it. And then the idea of, you know, more than two, you know, trips per month or two buckets per month that we would allow it, but charge, you know, the the $50 per bucket fee as kind of cost recovery on that to limit what's coming to us. Curbside bulk pickup, we currently have the spring and fall free pickup, which has been very popular. But it's also very costly in the sense that we rent extra equipment, we bring crews over from streets and sewers to help supplement in order to get that done in the two week time period. And so we can save significant money if we were to eliminate that. In addition, looking at implementing, you know, monthly as opposed to every two weeks for bulk and brush, use different collection areas. And this could help us then to stay on schedule better. There are certain times of the year when brush or bulk gets very, very heavy and we sometimes fall behind. And this would help us to to stay on track better. And then also that $50 per bucket charge for curbside bulk pickup, currently it's 25, but that really doesn't provide the the cost recovery. You know, that 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 the 25 is just way too short. And then disallow extreme demolitions. What we mean by that is that there have been cases where people just put piles of stuff on the curb that really they should have gotten a dumpster for and disposed of it that way. And then I, you know, brush and limbs really need to be cut up into manageable sizes and piles that we're not trying to pick up stuff that's 20 foot long limbs that somebody should have cut in half or or thirds in order for it to be picked up more effectively and and hauled off in the truck. Uh and then uh curbside leaf collection, uh we've talked about this some uh would be uh proposing to go with bags and uh. That would help with a number of things with uh you know, the leaves blowing around the neighborhood, uh getting into inlets and and uh you know. Clogging inlets and and flooding issues and other things. Uh and and so uh also, you know, just just encouraging people where possible to to compost and mulch. With leaves because every every uh you know, leaf we don't have to haul away saves everybody some money and is more ecno- ecologically friendly because uh in the end we. We take the leaves out to uh farm fields and they um you know, cultivate them in any way to recycle them, but if people can recycle them at their house, even better. Um and what does that look like in terms of the um you know, cost for uh you know, citizens to uh bag them and that type of thing? So we looked at what our uh total uh yardage is that we dispose of annually, uh you know, to pay the the farmer to take our leaves. And then uh factored in, wh- what would that be uh un compressed? Because you know, remember that what we take to the to the farmer uh through the packers and stuff is compressed. And uh we we back calculate that uh you know, given uh an estimated twenty-three thousand plus customers. Uh it would end up being uh roughly eight uh bags per customer on average. Obviously, there's some that are going to be much more than that. And at fifty cents a bag, we're looking at uh an average of four dollars a customer um is is what we calculate for that. And then uh we've done, you know, some audits internally to make sure that we're charging uh you know, the right uh. Customers, the right right amount for the right-sized cart, whether it's thirty-five, sixty-five, or ninety-five and so forth. Uh and we ought to continue to do that because uh there can be disconnects between what we pick up in the field versus what is being billed in Munis. And so we we want to make sure that's appropriate. Uh and then looking at uh some of the other um things that uh the solid waste uh area does, like alley maintenance or uh median cleanup. Um and helping with snow ice vehicles and and sometimes clean up an abatement from administrative court findings uh to to uh allocate those. Um from the general fund as opposed to uh supporting it with the enterprise fund with the user fees. And then overall, what does that look like? Well, um in in uh you know, each of these areas from uh bulk waste to brush to. The fall leaf collection to these other items, um if we implement those, uh we look that we can um. You know, help our uh annual budget uh to the tune of potentially uh two hundred thousand to the positive. Uh and we're we're looking at these numbers as uh trying to be conservative so that uh we can meet those goals and uh. And have an enterprise fund that is uh self-sufficient and able to stay uh in the black. Um and so uh I know I covered a lot of material rather quickly, um but uh this, like I said, is built on the other four. Presentations that have been done and uh we'll look forward to your uh discussion and uh and feedback here.
Real quick, Kevin, before we go to questions, uh the uh conservative projections in the previous slide. Uh it showed about a two hundred and uh fifty to three hundred thousand dollar uh surplus. Uh in the the scheme of the entire solid waste budget, this is about a three or four percent projection. It's one that we felt was prudent instead of uh projecting flat uh or not giving us a little bit of cushion. Uh as uh those numbers possibly increase, if the projections are accurate, we don't see uh anything unforeseen like a si- uh an ice storm. Uh you know, any other kinds of storms that uh we would deplete deplete those funds. Uh these funds could be used for other areas, uh other projects within public works. As we conclude and uh turn this back over to the mayor and the council for uh questions and comments. You know, staff uh have identified this problem. We've known that this uh was an issue. Uh for the last year and a half, we've had uh a fair number of uh conversations, uh a public conversation that's occurred over the last four or five months. And staff really are trying to put uh uh the community in a position where we are delivering comparable services to what they've expected. Uh at uh no additional cost to the resident. That really was charge number one. And uh we heard that very loud and clear from uh the previous council. And then uh the Public Works Director Kevin Cothe uh took the three new uh newly-elected members. Uh into a three-on-one last week, might have been two weeks ago, to uh catch them up as well. Mayor, I'm gonna turn this back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. It looks like we do have questions. Um so we're gonna start with Councilmember Matthew.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Kevin. Uh I have a couple of questions. Uh first, something I brought up before was regarding apartment cleanouts. Um I know that that's an ongoing issue. Um I've driven through several of them that were kind of in the Ward Four area just to the east of downtown recently. And one of the things that came out of that is that uh that the apartment management companies. Might not care if we charge a per-bucket fee for the the apartment cleanouts because the water bill. And therefore, the garbage bill might still be in the name of the resident uh that was the tenant that was just there. And so when they do the apartment cleanouts and we bill somebody, if it gets billed to the resident who's no longer lives at that residence and moved out. You know, when it should be billed to the apartment company. I mean, how do we reconcile that to make sure the appropriate group or person or envy is actually getting the bill? Because I don't want to see. Somebody who moved out of a place to find a better home, get stuck with the bill when they had no control over uh the company decided to do a cleanout and. Complete remodel of the uh the the apartment.
Yeah, um traditionally, the uh apartment management uh or the owner uh is ultimately responsible for the bill. Um they do follow the tenant what when they can, but ultimately if the tenant's gone and doesn't pay the bill, it goes back to the property owner.
Okay, so there's a kind of a provision already in there to take care of that. Okay, uh so um. Uh the next question I had was around leaf collection and we've talked about bagging the leaves. And uh of course, Ward One, Ward Four, Ward Six, Ward Seven, kind of a lot of the older parts of town. Um have massive trees. Um you know, your your projections, you were saying you were thinking like four bags. Um in order to uh for per per residence and I was thinking to my head, I'm like, I don't think that there's any way possible. I could get all the leaves that are in my yard each year into down into just four bags. Um you so I guess that seems like that projection might not be feasible. Maybe that's an average across the whole city. If you look at some areas that have smaller trees that aren't as developed yet, but um I I I kind of question that particular number. And but my follow-up question to that is, uh right now, we we send out teams and we've got a truck driver. We've got a guy who goes ahead of them and he's raking the leaves and pulling them out in the street so that the third guy who's. Um running the the vacuum sucks the leaves up. What, where does that staff go? What happens to that staff? Do are we saving staff time? Are we? Are there, are we gonna reduce staff and by making this change, is that part of the savings or what happens there?
Yeah, uh good questions, uh Alderman Matthew. Uh the the bags, we calculated it was eight. Um eight eight bags at fifty cents would be four dollars for the bags.
Okay.
Um the uh the staff, uh when we uh do the leaf backs, um we hire additional seasonal uh labors. That are doing the raking and so forth. Um so we we uh you know, ramp up with our seasonal staff. Um for the leaf collection, um because it takes quite a few people, added people to do that.
Okay, so we just won't need to hire those people? I mean, I'm assuming somebody's still gonna have to be in a truck to get out and grab the leave, the sacks off the street and sling them into the back of a vehicle, right? So we're still gonna have to have somebody there, but maybe it's just not as time-intensive?
Right, and and uh you know, we're looking to use the loaders uh with the rear packers for the bag collection, so. Um you know, the loaders can pick that up and and drop it in the the uh back of the packers really pretty quickly.
Okay, uh I think that's all the questions I have right now. I do appreciate the uh. You know, something I advocated for in twenty eighteen was actual cost recovery for the pickups on the curbs and I appreciate seeing that. And I do like the concession of uh uh the Citizens Convenience Center having two free um drop-offs per resident each month, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Matthew. Next is Councilmember Muntney.
Well, first of all, I I think the driver of this is an internal accounting issue. And I looked back at notes dating to twenty eleven and twenty thirteen where there were persistent references to deficits with the enterprise fund associated with the. Solid waste collection. So this seems to not be an issue created in twenty eighteen, but one that has persisted for quite some time. Um I also read the notes in twenty eighteen and there was a pretty spirited discussion, it sounded like, in February of twenty eighteen, which was then. Referenced in the uh March uh twenty twenty eighteen meeting minutes. Where at that time, to address these issues and to address the persistent deficit. There was a reluctant, agreed-upon, five-to-three, I think, or maybe even uh closer than that vote. To allow a three percent year-over-year inflation rate in this area. And it was at least believed, according to the notes that I read, that providing that inflation. Of three percent year-over-year, that this issue would be put to rest. But I know there are changes in the market with regard to the valuation of recycling as an example. I've read articles that say a lot of the work done in recycling unfortunately still results in recyclables ending up in. In landfills. Um I also read um some some proposals back in that. That era talking about the percentage that was attributable to food waste being at fifteen percent or near that. And that um there would be efforts made that would be implemented by twenty twenty-two to address that from a cost-reduction perspective. So the bottom line around all of that is, this has been a chronic issue. The concern that I have is that we've now looked at this as an efficiency gain from the city's point of view. But it's a cost shift to our constituents and our residents. And I feel that there should be an effort made to look more specifically at our prior hypotheses. The facts that supported those that led us to be in the condition that we are yet again today. And as Jamie mentioned, the wards that in involve needing more bags. And having lived in a neighborhood like that at one point in my past, um it is very um you know, regressive in that place. And it's not just the issue of the cost associated with bags, but it's also a labor transfer. From the city's use of the vacuum as a technology solution to the actual resident. Who would be required to not only buy the bags, but to bag the leaves, which would transfer to more time upon them. So what is an efficiency is being evaluated from our perspective as a part of the city government. And what is an efficiency, I think, should be looked at from the perspective of the resident and the entire value stream. So it would be easier upon us to do these things, but not easier upon the people that we were elected to serve. The other thing um about this this um bulk waste disposal. And the two times a year that we had committed to picking up. In twenty eighteen, there were decent amount of conversations that looked like around that as well. Uh whereas there was a belief that people would be um accumulating items on their property. And that again would contribute to other challenges that the city might face. But in the formulation of the recommendations that we have today, what I haven't seen is the constituent view. I found a survey in uh twenty thirteen, should the city provide the service relative to solid waste? Talking about these very items and the vast majority of our population believes that we should be providing these items, including the. Persistent curbside yard waste collection, as well as the long, large item collection. So it would also feel uncomfortable making cuts without informing and inviting the perspective directly of the people that we serve.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Muntney. Um next is Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, I think I'm, I would probably pick up on a couple of those themes because I have some questions about. How to um tend to the needs of people who are either disabled. And not able to do their leaf raking themselves, for example, um or or cutting tree branches. People who have, you know, don't have those tools, um don't have the income to purchase the tools. Um and I'm just wondering what kind of options there are for them. Um because in my, you know, in in Ward Seven, that is a an issue. You know, we do have a lot of trees and we, you know, it's it's a lower-income part of town. And I think that what may or may not be an issue in in a neighborhood that that, you know, has higher income or fewer trees. Um it is an issue in our our part of town and it feels like like a way of um. It it feels like a burden on on our, you know, on residents of those parts of town. And so I guess I'm curious to know where the with the low-income um discounts, if any of that would apply there. Um and if that could be, you know, something that that could address that. I also have significant issues with um the amount of of garbage that's placed on the street when apartments are cleaned out. That's an ongoing um issue in neighborhoods in Ward Seven. And I'm curious whether the the plan addresses how long um. Those kinds of things can sit on the sidewalk before their um before the the bill comes due. Um in my opinion, I'm I'm not sure if if the two weeks is still the 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 plan. Um in my opinion, two days is too long for that kind of thing. And when, you know, our kids are having to wade out into the street. Um on their way to school, um in order to avoid having to walk through broken glass and garbage, um. That's the two days is even too long. I'm kind of wondering if there are any options for their, you know, to be penalties for repeat offenders when it comes to to. You know, cleaning out an apartment. Um frankly, I think a landlord ought to know know better the first time, but second time. It, there shouldn't be any excuses there and and to me, that's a uh should be a code violation that gets addressed. In a in a penalty kind of way, not just, okay, well, you know, we'll we'll send them a bill for it. So those are a couple of the issues that I have and I I wonder if um if we could address the question of the low-income discounts. Um you know, who that, what that might apply to and um give any more details about the apartment cleanouts.
Yeah, the uh code does provide for uh how long you can have your uh trash or recycle put out ahead of pickup. And how quickly you have to pull it back in, but that also applies to the uh bulk and brush pickup on the curb as well. And that would be part of what we need to do more enforcement uh to find those people that are not putting out at the right time.
I guess I'm I'm still looking for a bit of clarity on on how long um you know, a pile of of garbage can. Bulk garbage can sit on the sidewalk if a landlord clears out an apartment before that landlord um gets sent a a bill. Is it still two weeks under this plan? And um is there any kind of penalty for that? Beyond just what the fifty dollars per bucket?
Yeah, the the fifty dollars is really not a penalty. It's more of a cost recovery to collect the refuse. Um there is in the code, like I say, uh penalties that could be enforced for having it out, uh you know. Uh too far in advance of pickup or um. Uh so yes, there are are ways to enforce that even currently. Um we we don't necessarily spend a lot of time trying to enforce it at this point, but we need to do more of that. Um especially, like you said, for repeat offenders, I think. Um you know, we we want to get better at that.
Sorry, and does the low low-income um discount apply to some of the issues that we've been talking about in terms? In terms of, of, um, you know, helping people get rid of, of bulk, um. Brush and so forth if they can't, or, or bulk trash if they, um, if they're not able to pay that.
Yeah, um, I, I need to, to, uh, check on that aspect of it. We only have like twenty one accounts right now that qualify for the low income. And I don't remember if our code has, uh, allowances in there for the, uh, uh, bulk pickup. But, you know, it's certainly something we could look to include in, in what we bring to you as a, a recommendation for the code changes. Uh, because it, it, it's not, it, it, the qualifications for the low income are pretty stringent. And so we, we only have, like I say, only just over twenty that qualify right now.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ward. Uh, next we have, uh, Councilmember Craybill.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I wanted to, um, go off of what, uh. Councilmember Ward, uh, mentioned with regard to low income fee discount. Uh, Kevin, you mentioned there were about twenty one accounts. That's not necessarily everyone that's eligible, correct? That's just the number of people that have actually applied.
That, that's right. Uh, they have to apply for it and of the ones that have applied or in are eligible, that's how many we have right now, yes.
So, you know, if we look at, um, you know, this, you know, it, it applies to people living in poverty at or below the poverty rate. And if we look at the poverty rate, rate for Bloomington, the number of households, there's probably at least thousands of households that would apply. So any ideas on how we can, uh, get the word out, uh, on, um, on this, uh, discount program?
Yeah, and, uh, you know, when we did some of the earlier, um, you know, presentations, uh, for you back in, uh, the spring. Uh, we did have coverage from, um, the Panograph and, and from, uh, you know, our local television stations. And so that was one of the things that was brought out, uh, I know for sure by, uh, a W Y Z Z W, uh, M B D. I talked to reporter and they highlighted that program. Um, and I think we did have some inquiries after that. So, uh, you know, it, it is on our website, the information, uh, and we've, uh, also, like I say, have spoken with the press recently about it.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, next, uh, this looks like last but not least, Councilmember Bowlin.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, well, I, I have a couple of questions and to address, uh. Alderman Ward's, uh, concern, um, about the bulk and sitting out. Would it be possible, um, to require the landlord, the owner of the property? To, when they're unloading all that stuff from within the empty apartments, to get a. Whatever, you know, to get their own trash bin, that huge truck thing. And load it up themselves instead of emptying out the apartment and throwing it on the curb. Or is it the renter that does that?
Yeah, I, I think it's probably a little bit of both, but more, more so probably the landlord. Cause I, I think the renter sometimes just, uh, leave the mess for the landlord to clean up.
Right, but, but you understand what I'm saying. Is there any way that we could try to enforce that? Just like, you know, you're gonna get charged extra for bulk and, you know, that it has to be within forty eight hours. That, you know, this stuff needs to be off the street and inside of a, um, a dumpster. It, it, I, I agree that having all that trash set up for a week is just horrible. But again, that's the expectation and, you know, we have to kind of, have to kind of deal with it. Um, I'm curious about the brush burner and so curious that I would like you to invite me out. For the inaugural use, cause it's right around in my neighborhood. Um, and you had, you had some numbers in the report about, um, the cost of operating. There's going to be an additional cost for operating. Is that for personnel? Or is that for like diesel fuel or what is the operating costs?
Yeah, i- i- it's not personnel because, uh, you know, we're planning to use our own, uh, staff, uh, to, to run that air burner. The, uh, the operating cost is, uh, the diesel fuel and some consume, consumables with that, uh, air burner. Because the, um, air curtain itself is run by a, a, a large blower that's a diesel powered. So there, there's, uh, some costs involved with the diesel fuel and some, some other parts to the air burner.
Okay, is there, um, a maintenance agreement or warranty on, on the unit?
There is, and I, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but I know there was a, a warranty and.
Okay. That's good enough. Um, let's see. And on the leaf collection, um. In, in your report, it said you were gonna notify with the mail bill, the bills that are mailed out and door hangers and all that. Well, I do my bill pay online and I never get notifications unless I go on the website to see what's going on. And there will be an additional labor cost to have people walk around the neighborhoods and put door hangers. So I was wondering if there's more of a way to, um, get this out electronically. The notification about all these changes with leaf collection and, um, the bulk waste and all that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, uh, and, and that's something we can work with, uh. You know, our, our I T folks with the utility billing and everything too, to see what are those, uh, ways to get out electronic notifications and that type of thing. Uh, because like you said, if you're paying online and get electronic bills, then you're not necessarily getting the, uh, the paper inserts, uh, with the paper bills anymore.
Right, right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilmember Bowlin. I was actually kidding when I said you were last, so I have a couple more. No, they just raised their hands. I wasn't kidding. Uh, so Councilmember, uh, Mottney and then Councilmember Emi. You're muted.
I feel like we're talking as if the decision has been made. I know the five presentations all reiterated really what appear to be the same recommendations. But there's been a lot of feedback and a lot of dialogue since then that should be considered. And even more dialogue tonight as people have made points about expanding the, um, the low income subsidies. And things of that nature that need to be built back into the analysis for the financial return in this regard. Um, the other, uh, question that I have is specific about the labor cost reduction. None of the internal staff will, um, will be reduced in this case. It's my understanding from our discussion previously, they would just be shifted to other work. So on an accounting basis, it changes the perception related to this internal subsidy. But on an actual basis, I'm not clear on what the actual net recovery would be. Save a, a few seasonal, uh, employees, which I, I don't believe, uh, make up the bulk of this, um, opportunity.
Right, so some, some of the, uh, employees like for the spring and fall bulk pickup, those, uh, staff come from our streets and sewers division. For those two weeks. And so those, uh, people are no longer able to get done the tasks that they should be working on. Whether it's, uh, repairing inlets or, or road or, you know, other types of repairs. Um, and so, uh, by keeping those, uh, staff where, where they should be. Then we'll actually be able to keep up a little bit better on, on road and storm sewers and sewers and other maintenance that we need to be doing. Uh, and, and so there's, there's a benefit there by not having to pull them in, uh, for that spring and fall pickup. Um, you're right, overall, doesn't necessarily change, uh, who we have staff wise, labor wise, our overall costs as a city. But it, but it does, uh, allow us to get, um, those people continuing to work on the things that they really should be working on.
But that should be from our internal perspective and that's my concern with this. Uh, we're making decisions that really are, um, people that we serve should be valuing these. And the last time they did value them, they valued them a lot higher than we appear to be in this recommendation.
I don't think that's an accurate comment. Uh, what we're trying to do is provide comparable services without increasing the cost. There's been no, uh, decisions that have been made. That's why, uh, we're bringing this before council. If, uh, council makes a decision to absorb a million dollar deficit, that's council's decision. We'll, we'll figure it out as staff and we'll take that charge.
That's very helpful. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Councilmember Emi.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so a lot of my questions have, have been answered. But I am interested in hearing more about this regional plan that you mentioned. Which, um, suggests to me that there's going to be some parsing of the community, um, in a different way. Based on potentially what's needed. Um, and, and so I, I'm just, that you don't have to tell me tonight or us tonight. But in the future, I'd be really interested in, in what the regions are and how that, that is being determined. And I'm also, um, what I can, continue to hear consistently is that if we do maintain. The level of service that we currently provide, it's, um, more expensive. And it, it has to be accounted for in some way. Um, but, but perhaps there are ways to consider and explore alternatives. So I'm just putting that out there as I looking around as the last word, I guess, from, uh, from the floor.
And yes, this was truly the last word. Thank you, Councilmember Emi. Um, so I, I, I think my, my sense, you know, just hearing from, from everyone. It, it, it looks like we have some folks who might want some options. You know, who are not quite ready to, to go with what's presented, uh, tonight. So I don't know, so we, I think we'll have to, uh, you know, maybe staff will, will take some time to, to think about some of the. Issues and questions that were raised and, and reach out to the individual council members and, and try to address them. And, and eventually, uh, at some point, maybe we bring forward some options. I don't know, does that, uh, sound like an accurate? View of what, what happened tonight? Okay, I see some nods. Okay, we'll go with that. Thank you. Uh, City Manager Gleason, would you like to add anything else in terms of how staff will work with that?
We'll figure it out.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Well, thank you, uh, very much, uh, City Manager Gleason. And, uh, Director Kevin Coofe, I know this has been, uh, quite a, quite a bit of time that you spent on, on this presentation. But, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out and make the best decision possible for, uh, our residents in the community eventually. Um. I think the next item on, uh, on the agenda is, uh, our city managers discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, Phil, if you would, uh, put up the first slide. I think I've got four. And we've got, uh, farmer's market. I, I know I say this every week, but, uh, well attended. Uh, we've had some pretty good weather, uh, so far and I probably shouldn't have said that. But, uh, uh, we have had, uh, good weather, good turnout. Uh, I think people are just excited about, uh, getting out and interacting. And this is a great venue in our downtown. Next slide. Uh, get your fix on Route sixty six. Uh, this is the July first Friday, uh, before the, uh, fourth of July, uh, weekend. Uh, this is Friday, July second, five P M to eight P M. Next slide. Animal crackers education classes. We talked about this one last time as well. Still, still time to sign up. And, uh, this runs July sixth, seventh and eighth. Next slide. Uh, free lunchtime concerts downtown and then the, uh, free community concert van series in Franklin Park. Uh, the dates can be found right there or on our website. And I think I might have one more. There we go. Uh, Michael White, uh, is a new hire, uh, superintendent of, uh, solid waste. Uh, you know, look what we were just talking about. Uh, he's hired just in time to be a part of the solution here. And then we've got, uh, John Branham, uh, that, uh, comes to us with, uh, twenty years of municipal experience. Uh, from the, uh, Chicago suburbs. He has ties, uh, here in the community. And was hired to, uh, uh, fill a position, uh, for Melissa Hans' apartment. And then also not in this slide, but, uh, day one was, uh, today for Catherine Murphy, the, uh, communications manager. And there is so much of what we were talking about tonight, whether it's an internal communication strategy or an external, like, communication strategy. That, uh, very excited getting her up and running and it's not gonna take much, uh, given her experience. So, uh, uh, her first day was today. And then lastly, uh, from me, Mayor and Council, uh, next week's, uh, council meeting will be the last one that we'll be having, uh, virtually. Uh, where, uh, Leslie, uh, Yokum, the, uh, city clerk and I are setting at, uh, one oh nine East Olive Street. Uh, the council meetings are gonna move to, uh, the government center. We're gonna share that space with, uh, McLean County. This has been a work in progress for quite some time, so we're gonna resume in person, uh, at the new location. And I believe that, uh, first council meeting is Monday, July twelfth. We've had a couple of, uh, commission meetings so far, sort of as trial runs. And, uh, fair amount of, uh, again, back to Craig, uh, fair amount of, uh, I T, uh, involved in, uh, getting this ready for us. Uh, and that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, City Manager Gleason, and thank you everyone for, uh, a wonderful evening, great discussion. And, uh, definitely appreciate, uh, uh, your, uh, uh, involvement and, and feedback on all the presentations. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Hey, it looks like Councilmember Bowlin is ready. And, uh, second by Councilmember Ward, I'll do some favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a good night, everyone.